You're watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 21st meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Stand to join me, the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to our February 2023 meeting. We welcome back Warren Shock as a council member stepping in for Scott Silkness. Thank you, welcome back.
Welcome officially sworn in.
Fantastic, glad to hear it. That being said, let's move on to the approval of the minutes from the January 10th of 2023 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections, changes, or questions?
Um, yes, we do.
Um, I thought that we approved the ALCO payment of $2,500.
Oh, we did? Okay, I will make that change.
Yes.
Except the invoice said $3,000.
Right, but when we talked about it and voted on it, we voted for, the motion that Kyle made was for $2,500.
Okay.
And then it was seconded and Sharon passed.
They call ALCO because?
They have your check, they called me today.
Okay.
So Drew called me today and said he's got the check. So we'll have to get it corrected, one issue, and then he'll give me that one back. And if you let me know when you have it ready, then I'll just take it down there and I'll do a hand-to-hand exchange.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other changes or corrections? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 10th?
I'm moved to approve the minutes from January 10th with the correction that Mr. Cubic presented.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Josh, anything we should know with the fund report?
No, not unless you have any questions, the year has been rolled over in the annual reports lately.
Council, any comments or questions? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the fund report.
I will make a motion to approve fund report as presented.
And a second?
A second, bad.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to payment of the bills.
So I see ALCO is on here for $3,000, that would have to be?
That will be voided.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone have any questions on payment of the bills?
Uh, maybe just one, Steve on your 4-inch Park Department CPR class, that's just you, I assume, right?
That's just mine.
Yeah.
The uh, Corvado and Southwell are going to in-service in March, theirs will be built separately. Steadman is already through his previous job certified.
Is that two years still?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve payment of the bills.
I'm moved to approve payment of bills for January 2023. I'm sorry for that.
Thank you Kyle, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Moving on to correspondence, do you have any correspondence? Okay. Then we'll move on to reports, we have Pete up first with MS4.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, what do we say now, at the end of last month, we had a Zoom meeting, Jen, Josh, and I with Stacy Goodwin, who's the state MS4 coordinator, and Randy Braun, who heads I.D.M. for the state. The short story is, we were told, quote, "She doesn't care how we get it done, as long as we get it done." She gave us an extension deadline, April 1st, for stormwater quality management plan, camp, uh, water quality and so forth. I passed the blue binder with some stuff from our old MS4 program that I managed to find in my files, um, because that is outside my area of expertise doing that, so we will be relying on both of you gentlemen, because our ordinances will need to be updated, modified. Um, she, Gretchen said, "Do not reinvent the wheel on this stuff, we can borrow from other MS4 communities and just modify stuff," but that is our deadline. And I also had a conversation with Brad Danskie today, who is the attorney for Michiana Shores, and he would like me to give him a call, he is interested in forming something up.
Nice.
So, I think though, first we should hit that April 1st deadline and then go on, then get that out of the way, and then try and put something together with the whole community, is what I'm going to say, because I know, Corvado County, other than the $85,000 that is in the non-reverting fund that will go for public education and outreach and should, quote unquote, cover us for 40 years, I think was?
I think that's what they said.
What was said, "We're not going to get any help from them."
No.
So we're gonna have to do this on our own. I'm more than willing to give you any assistance that I can, but like I said, this is outside my area of expertise. I'm still trying, I know I had a stormwater quality management plan, whether it was from La Porte or somewhere else, way back.
Okay.
I still can't find it, I've been looking, I'm hoping I'll trip across it at some point, but.
I wonder if we can ask Long Beach or Pot Park if they've got one, so.
That'd be overlap between all those and Brad today, so.
Yeah, perfect.
So, that's all I have.
She touched base with Michiana Shores?
Just briefly today, I had a private meeting with Brad Danskie, who excited a few minutes for some gossip and.
Being that we're not gonna get any help from the county, who else besides Michiana Shores?
Well, Pot Park and Michiana Shores, they still have a year to get their program right up and running, but I don't see any reason why we cannot reach out and help them along. They have less money than we do, us and Long Beach. That is it. I mean, we can try approaching Michigan City again, but you know, that number was way out of whack for us personally, partly individually. Maybe if we can get the Ford to finally sit down and gets things going, maybe we could approach Michigan City again as a unit and maybe get a little bit better price, I don't know. It's worth a try, anything at this point is worth a try.
Right, but I think before we do that, we have to go forward at that April 14th deadline for our submissions.
Yeah, get that taken care of, get that to Stacy Goodwin, and then you can always go back and amend stuff, I'm sure, at some point, but let's get our foot in the door and then work on trying to come up with a solution that's economically equal as much as possible for everybody.
And that was the, that was the extension of?
Yeah, that was the extension, our meeting was, I think, the 26th of January, so that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you Kate.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Question, I just, sorry to catch up.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Is this a task on our plate, on Mr. Willoughby's?
Yeah, yeah, it's now, each MS4 entity has to have their own stormwater management quality plan, water quality report, and we already did the ordinances when we first set up the program, but they'll just need to be updated and modified because there's been a change in the rules. But we can still, according to what we understood, we could still hire one person to be the MS4 coordinator for all four entities, well, as an example, but he would have to file individual annual reports and monthly reports for every MS4 community, not just a whole one. It'd be four individual pieces.
Mr. Willoughby, okay with this, or any questions?
I am all right with it, and like I said, I'm already, Your Honor, working with it at a time with Long Beach, so yeah, that'll be a good opportunity.
Okay. Thank you Kate.
Thank you.
If you, I will contact you later regarding another issue with the street sign.
Oh, okay.
So we can plan.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, but I didn't know if I should say anything or so. And I was very appreciative for that, please may.
Absolutely, well deserved, yes.
On an off note, for those who might not know, Kate's father, John Doyle, served as our town engineer for many years, and to honor his memory, we have a street sign, we're gonna name part of Rainbow Trail in his honor, and so we'll schedule that ceremony with you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Willoughby?
I don't have any updates, most of the comments on your new business, the only thing I knew of is I reached out on the weapons issue after the last meeting, had a direct conversation and a promise, and unless somebody updates me otherwise regarding any progress or fixing or applications being submitted for permits, yeah, it's really your direction.
So nothing has occurred at this point?
Nothing for my, well, he was supposed to come in and, again, all the promises that we thought might not be fulfilled, unwilling to anything for sanitary district and all, like.
Just stay aware of the situation and, and then follow up on what's happened, so it's not the issue until he gets into doing the work they gave him for him to put in a pipe, but you know, we had a sweep up from the town.
So I, I mean, I think maybe something more formal in terms of writing and just we're gonna look to hold him accountable.
Because the assurance was made that it would be handled and taken care of by January 13th, which it was not. Um, I think you're correct, does anybody else?
I'll send it to Johnson, but that's, that's really, you know, that, and then I did have an opportunity, I do that one more, to talk to Skylar, who's the planner for Michigan City about the Mickey Road issue.
Yes.
And quite honestly, they're not real sure about your responsibility, but they're willing to look into it and work with me to try to help determine it and maybe set some correspondence, you know, somebody else mentioned going through the park, but you know, that's really not anybody's responsibility to dictate, it's a matter of, you know, those trucks and tearing up the road, and the city wasn't sure. I think that the responsibility is gonna be half and half, but getting them to potentially participate in making me knight in front of two?
Fiber bond?
Fiber bond, of the trucks and try to do that issue, so.
Okay.
And then I still need to put, I haven't had the chance to talk to Mr. Woodruff, so I just need to put you two in contact.
Okay.
That's it for me, other, like I said, everything else is about your business.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Mr. House?
Hello. Um, the CCMG 2023-1 grant application was submitted in time and fashion, probably in April or so, we'll hear back from them to see if the town won an award or money.
Okay. Anything further, or is it all in your business as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you. Nothing from the park department?
No, I even tried to call him and his.
And I contacted him as well, and he assured me they would have a meeting, but clearly that has not happened, so I'll contact Jim again. And our building inspector is not present this evening, has he left a report with you, Josh Lee?
No.
Okay. Anything for planning and zoning?
Nope.
Our police department?
May I ask a quick question there?
Absolutely.
On zoning, what has happened with any crews or anything with any property behind the old White Eagle?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing this time, okay. Good.
Not at the current time.
Okay.
Sure.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to thank you, I missed last month's meeting, I was ill, and I just want to thank you for your continued support, it's an honor and privilege to serve in my capacity here for the 2023 year, and I look forward to it. A couple of things to talk about, as you know, we do 24 hours a year in required mandated in-service, we once again are invited to participate in that in Michigan City, I've already gone, I think this year, two days is good for 12 of those 24 hours, then we get the other 12 in practicals such as driving, shooting, physical tactics, and we get those throughout the year, so we're in the process of getting our 24 hours in, keeps us certified. Deputy Steadman is a go-getter, he's on the roll, he's did fantastic through an abbreviated field training program, he's out on his own, he's working tonight, he's making his traffic stops and answering his calls and his reports that he submits, I'm up to standard with very little interaction, so couldn't be happier there. On that, there is, obviously there's some expenses that have come through that I talked to a couple of you about, the one that we had talked about two and a half years ago is the body worn camera. The body worn camera program was started when we had three officers, not four, so our program is based on three officers, you know, I got a meeting, it's a phone conference with TASER Axon on Friday to go over our options, but it looks like the best option is going to be simply to, it's best described as prorate him in with by the camera, and there's a two and a half year cost, that way he's on the rolling contract with us should we decide to continue with the body worn cameras from Axon in another two and a half years. I say two and a half years, we're a program where we get a camera at the beginning, two and a half years, and at the end. So we get three cameras, the program we enroll him in would be less costly, but he will only get two cameras and renew with ours, makes sense? The cost of that camera alone is $6.69 or something, and that's, we don't have the exact dollar amount, so don't quote me or write it down, but I will have that information for you as I can get it. Right, because they're also gonna do a, an analysis on our data storage to make sure that we're not going, you know, we're not coming close to our data storage with three body cameras. From what I can tell, we should still be in good shape with the amount of data that we have, but the data wasn't that expensive to add more.
How much did we currently pay for?
I don't have that in my head, I'm sorry. I don't remember what the contract was.
Is it at least a terabyte?
I don't even think it's that, I think it's like a hundred gig or so.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, it's large enough, and when we first started the program, because you go by the nine months, we keep everything basically about nine months unless we tag it for a longer duration.
That's right, I don't know that now.
And at the end of that nine months, we still have quite a bit of data left, we were close to our limit.
Okay.
It's not anything we've ever gotten any notes about, so they said, "If you don't get a notice, don't worry about it," so I don't look at it.
Okay.
But we are gonna review that Friday, just to make sure we don't need to add data.
Okay.
So Steve, on these lease or purchase?
It's a purchase, it's called a TAP program, don't ask me what that stands for, you do pay a little bit more, but it's all-inclusive when it comes to warranty, equipment upgrades, it's the same with our tasers. This program for the body cameras expires in March, I shouldn't say expires, excuse me, the renewal, the new equipment upgrade is in March, and the tasers, Rebecca, the body cameras is two and a half years, the taser is five years. So in March, it's two and a half years since we started our body camera program, in July, five years since we started our taser program, so we're gonna work together on all of it and get it all done at once, because they said there's no sense doing it twice.
Gotcha.
Makes sense?
Yep.
So we get tasers, we'll get another one, or a new one, either the one we're carrying now, or we can upgrade to the latest or greatest, but there's most likely we'll just stay with what we have.
Gotcha.
Vehicles, we've got our vehicles all squared away as far as switching them around, we have the 2019 Charger is now our fleet vehicle, Deputy Steadman is driving the 2015 Explorer that Southwell was driving before, we did put some money into it, as I explained to you, that's the vehicle that he fits in, it's still a good vehicle, it's still in very good shape, and it runs great now, it's so far no problem.
How many miles does it have on it?
Hundred and, 120 something.
Okay.
Um, the only thing left to do on it is we are removing the graphics and getting those replaced, because they're peeling off, they've been on there since 20, about this time, 2015, so eight years, so we're getting the new graphics, the newly designed graphic that you came up with last year, so that'll be on there, a worker with Reaper Rapid Arts now to recreate that graphic, at half the cost of what we were paying. That leaves us with the last vehicle, which is the 2015 Unmarked Explorer, I know that this has been, it was talked about in December, I believe, and it was, there was kind of some confusion, I was under the impression that it was, it wasn't voted on, but I was under the impression it was okay, I know the street department is asking for it, and I think that's the direction we're taking, but I think to transfer that asset from our department to his, I don't know what it's gonna take, but I will say, once that decision's made, if it is transferred, he's gonna change some lights out in it, because he can't have the red and blues, we want to do that all at once, so we don't pay twice, because we have to decommission and take our red and blues out, but when they take those out, put the amber and white in, so that's why if we can get a decision on that, that'd be great, and I can get that monkey off my back.
Do we need a motion for that though?
Yes.
So if we can make the motion to transfer that vehicle from the police department over to the, to the street department and fix the lighting issue?
The street department will make the cost of decommissioning it.
That'll be on the back end, as far as I'm concerned, but yeah, I'll make the motion to transfer the 2015 Unmarked Explorer to the, from the police department to the street department.
If you'd like the VIN number, I can get it for you, it's official, but it's.
I think we all, I think we all know which vehicle we're talking about.
Just wanna make sure.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Well Steve, how many vehicles do you have?
Now, with, with that one, we had six, now we have five, one for each officer and then our fleet vehicle, which is historically how we were.
Okay. For your trainings, are you planning to, to attend the crisis intervention training?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking at next month, forgive me on the date, I forget what it is, that's my short week, so I just gotta make sure I can get coverage of those two days and switch doctors if I admit to work, miss an hour of class, but yeah, that's, that's something I plan to do.
Oh, excuse me.
We will actually all go through it.
I was gonna say, I would like everyone to go through that, that's, thank you.
Detective Wheeler is one of the best in that category, so.
And I've heard great things about it, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions of us? Again, we thank you for your support, and Warren, welcome back, it's like you can see you.
Thank you.
Outstanding, why you're cutting your ass and shit.
No worries.
Mr. Zerbas, how are you this evening?
I'm here.
Let's talk about the street department.
Talk about the street department. Yes, as you guys have noticed, hot boxes have been patched, and wellness was done also, so if someone comes up with that, I have main hours put into that, if we have to go down that road in the future, okay? We did run a hot box this time from South Bend, the guys were extremely crazy about how well everything went, it was so easy, a lot easier than what we've been doing, and I feel that we're gonna have a better product out of it, a little bit more long-lasting, because it's actually heated, just not poured in cold. So we did that last week, we got that out of the way, uh, just been hammering on some odds and ends right now until the weather hopefully breaks and stays broke, so we move forward with getting the leaves picked up in April, I did send out?
Yes.
To you today, and to Josh, listed days that we're gonna look at for picking up leaves in April, once a week, every week in April again.
And do you wanna, you don't want to address those until next month publicly, correct?
Yeah, we'll address them next month publicly, I just figured this way you guys had a heads up, the thing, you know, we'll get them on the site, so on and so forth, you know, Facebook, make sure it's all out there, so.
You want those specific dates on?
Specific dates, just because of how schedules fall for us, it has to be specific dates, unfortunately.
Do you mind if I read those?
Go for it.
Okay, so the specific dates that he listed were April 5th, April 14th, April 20th, and April 27th, all of 2023, so it'll be once a week, each week in April, and if the leaves aren't ready to be picked up on that last day, they won't be picked up with the leaf machine until the fall.
Right.
So if somebody has leaves, you know, after that time, they'll have to go in a yard with a stack, which I don't believe they'll pick them up with the yard waste, so.
So, yeah, so that's what we got, that's what we're looking at this point, and thank you for your approval, actually that's gonna save us some money, some fuel and stuff, instead of running the large trucks like that, so before we had to go to Fort Wayne Place, it was saving some money and fuel going to Fort Wayne Place to get stuff for leaf machines, so, you know, just, I think it's gonna help us out, and then also during the summertime, they use the two pickups all the time, so not having one there, if I'm driving one, it just didn't make sense, so I think it's gonna help us out a lot.
We appreciate you thinking of that, so that was, that was a great move.
Yeah, just try to, you know, move forward on stuff, let's not stand in one spot all the time. Any other questions?
I don't think I've seen you guys stand in one spot very often, it's your catch and tackle, so it just doesn't happen.
They keep moving, I'll tell you what, they keep, whether I'm here or not, if I'm at the station, they're moving like mad.
They absolutely are.
They don't stop, that's for darn sure.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem.
I have a comment on the leaves.
Yes.
One of the things I've noticed, being back in town and all, retired, going around town, there are actually some homes that some really need some attention, and I'm wondering, in this case, if we know the dates, can we send out a specific letter to the specific?
Funny you say that.
Thank you.
I physically knocked on doors, when we were doing leaf pickup this fall, I took an afternoon, when it was raining, when I knew it was towards the end of the season, and I knocked on doors, I tagged doors, I even had a letter written with it.
Nothing.
They still aren't doing it. If they want to do them, they're gonna get done, and what, no matter what, and I know there's, there's some vacancies around town and everything, but there are some that, I mean, you see people, you see the cars come and go, see different vehicles, if they're not gonna do it, they're not gonna do it. So, what path that goes down, probably for the higher up over there, but as far as, I did make an effort this year to make sure, hey, listen, because we always get those calls, hey, you guys never came by, listen, here's the last day we're doing it, everything, I think Jeff Bruder years ago had those red door paint tags made, stapled a letter to it, put it on the door, last day of pickup, if it's not out, it won't be till spring.
What's, do we have any leverage?
I don't think it's covered under any of our ordinances, unfortunately, weeds are not covered.
Well, weeds and stuff are.
Weeds are, but not weeds.
Weeds are not covered, and when we approached the subject with Mr. Herob, he said that you cannot regulate that for the sole fact that it becomes too. he said that you cannot regulate that for the sole fact that it becomes too subjective. Whereas with grass, it's, you know, you can actually define a height, but with leaves, it's like, how much is too much? So he wasn't willing to entertain that. Now we have different counsel, and I, I don't know if you want to talk to him about that.
I think that's generally the case, but if you mentioned condition in general, if there's some other things that you want to include, then send the correspondence, some of those things go hand in hand sometime, like disrepair. Or, you know, weeds that might be the erosion.
There's some homes that have the leaves and they're blanketed, you don't worry about the grass, because the weeds on the grass are going to grow. It's going to be dirt.
And you're pretty hard pressed on that.
But during the summer, we do the grass list every week, and during the, during the fall, there's something to do with the leaves.
Yeah, yeah. So that could be included if we, if there were other things wrong with the yard.
Yeah, where there's not being places this, in disrepair, yeah, something that I, I wouldn't shy away from counseling you that you could mention that. That's important, but if you don't bring your home in compliance, we may take action, you know, including these things, but just do that.
It's a lack of priority.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Sharon, what about NERCy?
I did attend a NERCy meeting on January 19th, and were able to have a quorum. So we did approve the 2023 NERCy budget, um, budget, NERCy's budget 23. Um, then we welcomed some newbies, um, and other miscellaneous, they have several different jump offs, you know, transportation, environmental, I'm just part of their full commission, but if anybody's interested, you can definitely go to their website at NERCy dot.
Any specific projects that would benefit us here? No? Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay, I have to ask. Okay, looks like we have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. Uh, we have the Cool Spring Fire Contract.
Yeah, I asked them, it's just.
Did they give you a due date for the contract?
A due date, actually, they were a little bit late in getting it to me. I did send a note to remind them when I sent the second installment last year. But then they were putting it to me, you know, it no longer exists for the town. So it's on, they sent that at the beginning of February, and so that's why it's on our agenda tonight.
January 1st is the, the contract date, or?
Correct.
Because I, I guess I might be old school or something, but I'd like to have a representative, you're just explaining. Let's give a report, it's going to be complicated, just they usually had done that, you know?
I agree, I haven't seen them here in almost six years, but they usually just send the contract, the attorney reviews it, and the council approves it, but I like the idea of a representative.
I agree as well.
I mean, they should be able to tell us, you know, the number of calls, at least, something, you know, whether responding at all, you know?
Would you mind reaching out to them, to the email address you have, and inviting them to the next meeting?
Not at all.
If, if you have issues with that, I can help. Just saying.
I have an email for the person who sent this to me, that's what I have. If you'd like to reach out, you certainly can.
Yeah, do me a favor.
That'd be great.
But just to note, the contract did go up four grand, uh, they usually do two-year contracts. So in 2022, it was 71,000, also in 2021, in 2020, it was 68,000, also in 2012.
Yeah.
So it goes up.
I think it's another reason why they should explain, I think.
Agreed.
I agree as well.
Buying new equipment.
I was, I was already, I was ready to ask those same questions today.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we can have a motion to table.
Next week, next week, next month.
Um, if we can have a motion to table the fire contract to the March meeting.
I would make a motion to table the Cool Spring Towns to adopt the fire department contract until, uh, the meeting in March 2023.
A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion passes. All right, and we have, following next up, adopt Title IV. I believe this would be Mr. Haas and Mr. Willoughby, correct?
I'm involved with already transition plan. I've been working on a thing to do Title IV. Is that, is it so?
Is it Sam who's been working with it?
Yes, the, this, this Title IV, exactly, people, it's on this formation. Want to move to the next one or not?
Okay, so we'll go on to the ADA transition plan, and then we'll come back to the other one.
Yeah. So anyway, I emailed the draft ADA transition plan for review and comments. Uh, this is a plan that deals with providing, um, access or the town agreeing to follow the Americans with Disabilities Act and, um, implementing a program to inventory the town's assets that, uh, things like sidewalks, sidewalk ramps, curbs, buildings that are owned by the town, um, that they comply with, uh, current accessibility requirements. Uh, regarding the, um, sidewalk ramps, sidewalks, curbs, there's not a lot of those in the town. And, and so I was, I was talking with Joe before the meeting, and we're going to get together. I think he might have time to, to mark up a map of where there are some. Sounds like there's not many, so compliance will be, uh, pretty easy. Because if there's, if there's none, then we don't, they're not efficient. Then, um, regarding the building, I think it's great that if you are still considering making renovations and additions to this building, then at that time, you can bring the, you know, the building up to, up to self as far as ADA requirements for, for the building. I imagine your architect is well aware of what's required to do that. Uh, one thing that, that, um, you know, the signs, rail signs for people who can't see all the way to, you know, making sure bathrooms light enough to turn a wheelchair inside of it, and doors are automatically opening, and all those kind of things, architects don't want.
Okay.
So that's great, you're on, you're already in progress of becoming compliant as far as this building.
Okay, and so the rest will inventory as, as you and Joe were able to tour the town?
Yeah. I think as far as, uh, I don't know a lot about the police stations building, and I think public boards might be announcing. Perhaps it would be, um, advantageous when the architect is here sometime, or maybe give him a heads up that maybe, I think it's a man, I'm not sure, could take a look at the, uh, that building and give you an opinion about what, what kind of things might need to be done there to be compliant.
The architect did that.
Yes.
I've got Buell from Cattail Designs.
Okay.
I believe, I believe that was a consideration.
Yeah, he, it's, he said everything's up to ADA requirements.
Oh, great, great.
But that's, if you want to take a look, I'd be more than happy to take you over there sometime.
All right, well, that, that's good news, and then with this building, you know, being brought up to compliance sometime in the near future, you know, it's on the schedule, let's say, it's something planned to do, and then it sounds like it'll be pretty, pretty streamlined.
Wonderful.
So is there a to-do list currently for an existing structure that we have, or are we all?
I think that's what we're starting to work on.
Okay.
It's getting all of that together, it sounds like.
Yeah, are those the only two town buildings?
So we have just the, the few buildings right here that are open to the public.
Okay, and parks.
Parks are, are there, but that, I don't know.
Yeah, right, there are things in parks, as far as having an accessible path to, you know, the features in the park, that may be something to look at.
So that'll be something when you go in inventory with, with Joe, that you'd look at?
Yeah, and also, um, you know, like having a handicap, uh, accessible parking.
Okay.
So these things are there. So there's a plan in front of you for consideration. Um, Mr. Willoughby has a resolution regarding adoption of that plan.
Which I emailed, I don't know.
I don't, I don't have a personal.
I'll say I don't have that. But the resolution is essentially, it's required to appoint, and it reconciles with this plan. So it appoints your clerk treasurer as the ADA coordinator, adopts the policy that's set forth in here, particularly the, the procedures for complaints and how to handle them. So it's all very standard language, but that, a resolution, that's why we had discussion today. Some of his view of this is there's a requirement of you to make a decision, to, to formalize that in appointing her as the ADA coordinator. So I, in fact, sent it now, as we've sent here, another updated version of that, had it Warren, because I didn't know he was official, so we can print that off and sign that, but that, the resolution would be for you to appoint Josh Lane as the ADA coordinator and adopt the policy that's in this plan for addressing complaints in the field.
So looking ahead at just say, whatever expenditures are, we, we have to require to stay current. Is that a separate budget issue, or is that a grant issue, or how is that? Eventually, if there's all the money that, whatever money, you know, just asking, we have to update parks.
Well, I think that's. I think it's all the above, and, and there's also some exceptions that, I think most of it is with regard to, you know, your documents and your programs, but it's all the above.
Okay.
But there are all things that are required to be able to apply for these grants, so it's, it puts you in a, it puts you in a tough spot for sure.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm sorry, I'm just reading through your, your email copy really quickly. So Josh Lane, are you okay with being ADA coordinator?
Yes.
So anybody else that's interested?
I think we all have other, well, most of us have other full-time obligations, and we don't have.
I'll do the best I can, as I always do.
So, so let's talk about, and not to put more on anybody's.
That was kind of funny.
Generally, it's been the clerk treasurer for some of the smaller towns that do it, because they're a point of contact. So really, what's referenced in this plan, what's referenced, is if you have a complaint, call this number, call this email, it's the town hall. So you can appoint whoever you want, and I'm not putting more.
So you can appoint someone to do the investigation, is that what you're saying?
Um, well, you are appointing the coordinator, the coordinator can handle however that's going to be, and there are, and some of those things you don't get to change. You know, within sixty days of the alleged complaint, they have to file that in writing, they, there are certain, uh, times that you have to complete your investigation, do all that. It has tended to be a practice to be, yet another thing for the clerk treasurer, but it, it tends to be a point person. Maybe you manage to have somebody else that you designate, it's up to you, you can, you can do whatever you'd like. It, it just tends to be the merger, because of the face of the town, right? But not putting more on her.
I, I'll do the best I can with everything that's on my plate.
But what I'm reading in here is that there are fifteen-day calendar days thereafter, if there's a complaint, that we have to investigate and respond in writing to the, to the complaint. Okay, but she could, we could have her designate somebody else, be it the street department and/or the police department to investigate the issue, or at least go out and take photos to.
Be that you have an agreement, but I, I would imagine it's one of those that collectively, the council and the clerk treasurer.
They can work together.
Ever have your fingers off the pole, try to take a pulse of it.
Okay, trying to make sure it's not any one person that's overwhelmed with, with things.
Yeah, and, and it may or may not be something substantial, I don't know that this, the street department or the police may be helpful, but I think it's this group here that should, you have a point person who accepts that and, and understanding the policy that she's going to communicate that right away to the group, and then you guys decide who's going to handle, and, you know, whether it's under her signature as the coordinator. I think that's my recommendation, that's just how it tends to work.
Okay. Questions, comments? So you're okay with running point then, at least?
If that's the way it is, then that is the way it should be.
That is the way it is written.
And if I need to raise my white flag, I certainly will.
Okay, please do let us know.
The white flag is up, guys.
If you need help with, with that part of it, if you should get a complaint and you need assistance.
I will let you make some.
Please do, okay. That being said, um, we have a resolution on the table in front of us to adopt the policies and procedures under the Americans with Disabilities Act, so we need a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the ADA.
Thank you, Warren, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Resolution.
Resolution passes.
Yeah, for what, for what I could help.
Thank you, Warren.
I have two, two newbies, so I'm going to say qualifying.
Qualifying, it does, it does.
That's the resolution. Yes. So you, you need to adopt this plan, so that plan.
So that would be the next then?
Yes.
So then we'll be next to adopt the plan for the American, um, compliance with the Americans. Thank you.
This is wonderful.
Thank you. So we have the ADA transition plan as presented by Mr. Haas, uh, we need a motion to accept that as well.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, ADA transition plan from, uh, Mr. Haas.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sharon, all in favor?
Aye.
Period opposed, it also passes. Because that puts us on a good path with the ADA and compliance there, which is great. Um, do we want to go back to?
So it is Title VI, there's a Title O in that. And so that goes along with, and I don't know if you have copies of those in front of you, but there is a resolution that is adopting, that is the nondiscrimination portion of it that goes along. So I, I'm not, I don't know if you have all of that, but that resolution is to adopt that policy again, which is required in part and parcel of this, those are things that aren't negotiable. So it's putting that plan in place and then adopting the provisions of Title VI, um, for implementation in both of those. Well, if you need to, I'll provide you with those for, for signature copies.
Okay, I, I don't have a copy in front of me, but we did it on that this evening as well.
Well, I guess that goes back to your, so with timing of it, then there's a new one. Is there a deadline, some of these, you could say, they wanted these to be already in place. Do you have a firm deadline on when they wanted to see them implemented?
The Title VI plan?
Yes.
Um, it's my understanding that, that, uh, that, that should be in place at the time of appointing for grants, uh, even going back in the past years.
I agree, and that's something we've talked about, that we're surprised that it wasn't. Or any, what they've started again to revisit and strengthen that, and this isn't the only town. So revisiting that, it's something that you need to do sooner than later. So again, it's you approving the resolution, approving that plan, and the nondiscrimination one. Again, those are not things that, um, you already have your ADA coordinator and the fourth person, but.
So the motion on the table will be to accept the resolution for the nondiscrimination.
For Title VI implementation plan, yes, and, and the plan itself.
And so the motion is as presented?
Just a resolution as it's presented, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sharon, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Pete, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have the nondiscrimination portion of this, the resolution as well. Okay, we feel better, we're on a good path. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I'll reserve the copies I sent you, the other, updated with Warren's signature too.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the baseball memorandum of understanding. Is there a new MOU this year?
It's changed from previous years.
It has last year's changes, so there's really just the dates. Material one.
And Marshall, how was the parking situation last year? The parking situation?
No problems.
Okay, so better than in prior years then?
Yeah, um, the director has taken an active role.
Wonderful.
Plus we've been diligent on keeping our signs out. It works out good.
Knowing that there are no changes to the MOU for the baseball program for City of Michigan City, do we have a motion to accept their memorandum of understanding?
I move to accept the memorandum.
I move to accept the memorandum of understanding for the Michigan City Parks Department to use our ball parks for 2023.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Yes.
If you would approach the podium, state your name and address. And then.
Okay, welcome. To Cleveland, yeah, road. Really wonderful town, Trail Creek, Indiana. Carens about if there's any updates with the third year plus ten acre of vacant land that's located between Chappaqua Parkway and Mankin. Mankin Road with this so-called housing development.
For the, for the Woodruff property? Mr. Willoughby, would you like to update?
I believe that they recently went before the school board to get approval there, and so now it's coordinating with redevelopment and planning permission, but that's on the petitioner to do so. That's, that's in the upper, I guess, on the agenda, but those things need to be coordinated with everybody that's involved. To answer more directly, there's still some process and some public hearings to be had, so.
Okay. Ms. Heath, I know we had some comments a few months ago through the year where I have spare money to ask a construction for the tribute developments, so getting that done would be a pleasure.
I wish there was. I, I wish there was. I wish I did have that funding. Uh, we, we're right now, we've had to cut our budget and it's been pretty tight. We really don't right now.
But I should still stay in communication with you on that topic.
Please, please.
What's the latest on the tax increment finance plan, TIF? Just out of curiosity, that was discussed a few months ago.
So that was the, that also refers to that same property development? Um, and that is specific to a residential development? And it is specific actually to that one residential development, so.
It's all sort of in the same.
It's all sort of in the same process, yes.
Okay. What's happening with the blueprint software? I know that on your website on occasion, I have to relearn a few things, so I take it it's in it.
On the website, separate from the implementation of the blueprint software, and that's set to go live possibly at the end of March. We're working closely with the software team.
I think that after, after this meeting, after the formal meeting, maybe have some discussion with you for a few months. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mary Foss Hoppe, that's H O P P E, and I own the land at 2811 East Michigan Boulevard. It used to be my law office before I retired, and now I have a tenant there, a residential tenant. On March of last year, March fifteenth, it was before this, um, the city regarding a utility bill I had received, or rather a refuge bill I had received, and it was waived. Because there was no one there and the refuge had not been used at all for a couple of years, okay? Uh, but I understand when I got my recent bill that it's back on. The amount that was waived is back on, because I understand that the following month that that resolution was rescinded. I'm not sure why it was rescinded. So what I'm, before the board asking for this evening is that the outstanding refuge bill be waived.
And what is that amount?
The amount would be twenty seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And like I said, that was for a period of about two years when there was no one at the, at the building at all, and refuge was not being used.
So you said it was March of last year?
Yeah, March the fifteenth, and I believe, um, at that time, the amount was, and I don't know what the difference is unless it's interest or penalty, two thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
I did bring this to you guys. We did rescind it, or I'm sorry, you did approve it, but then there was some cleanup on the property. It was on the agenda for a few months and then it just kind of fell off with the interest of, Mr. Willoughby looking further into.
With the refuge? Well, I, from my portion of it, there was some discussion about reaching out to the owner of the property and bringing the property into compliance, which came before the BZA, they approved the variance, but she's been complying there. So the rest of it remains your decision to waive or not. My recollection will now go through minutes, but whether you're going to implement or not, whether those back fees as well as penalties, you know, I, I know those things rack up. I don't really know the details of any of it. So that's back on your question. Those were related, I, but she has since brought her property into plans and has been working to that front, and the rest is your decision whether you do or don't. And I, I didn't, at this point, my old mind, I don't even remember the basis of rescinding it, but it all remains in your purview to consider, review it, decide what you want to do.
And was last year's bill paid?
Yes.
If you're.
And the year before was still, yes, so, yeah. Yeah, this year's, I'm sorry, this year's bill was paid, last year's bill was also paid, yeah. And they were paid exorbitantly before my town, he's ranking. And I would remind that this was just a time when there wasn't a refuge payout, you know, because there was no, it wasn't being utilized.
Right, and, and I understand that in this, I'm going to sound really cold when I say this, but the, the town has to pay the bill regardless of whether there's someone there or not. We still have to pay the, the bill for every single property. Even if it's a vacant home that's being managed by a bank, the bank still has to pay that bill as well. So I'm not, please don't think that I'm being, you know, heartless with saying that. I just want you to understand that we have a contract that we have to pay. And so if, if our residents don't pay those bills, or the property managers or property owners don't, we're still stuck with that portion of the bill as a town, which cuts into other budgets. That being said, um, council, I'll leave it to you to comment or have questions on this.
What's happening in the future, I mean, let's say next year and so on, will the same thing happen again? Or are you going to sell it, or what's happening?
Oh, no, as long as, you know, as long as there's someone there, as long as the refuge is being, being used, obviously. And it's been aimed at this year.
I know there were some, some cars that were in disrepair. Were those removed from the property?
Those are taken there, yes.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, unless Chief has something else to add.
Yeah, I was just going to tell you, I'm, I'm always decision of the original vote was the vehicles, the overgrowth, the weed overgrowth, there was some garbage. I think there's still a little bit of that, that needs to be done, but there's been quite a bit that has been done. I know that the, the east end of the building, they did some, or checked out the front east, they did some landscaping and it looks great. Uh, but there's still a few other things that, you know, some of the overgrowth that needs to be taken care of, but nothing major.
And have you looked at it this week?
No, I, in all.
Okay, because yeah, this week, uh, actually my tenant had been out there, has done a tremendous amount of work, and I believe that my son had called the street department regarding picking up the, um, the lince and that, and was told that they'd made their, their rounds, you know, and didn't need a specific pickup date.
Correct. And might I suggest, given that everybody's a little bit off guard, that maybe, since nothing is pressing and she's paid current for this year, that you go back and review maybe what actually constitutes that past due amount and see if that is yours, you know, be able to come back to make an informed decision of whether, as you said.
Hey, because I need to go back to the minutes from those meetings to find out why we rescinded it.
And with the basis of that numbers, so given that nothing's pressing and nobody's taking action against her as the owner now, that it's something that you could come back next month and make an informed decision.
Are we okay with you if we did that?
Uh, yeah, that, that would be fine.
So what was, excuse me, what was the total amount, uh, you were asking for, for it to, uh, rescind it?
Well, I, I believe when I paid my bill, which was just the other day, that the balance is two, two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Two seven five eight point nine three. And I'm trying to decide whether that was before or after I had paid the two fifty, I believe that was after I paid the two twenty, excuse me, for this year.
Okay. Okay. So if that's acceptable to you, then we'll, we'll take the month to review it and we'll come back and revisit this next month.
Okay, and what would that date be?
Uh, the next meeting in March will be March twenty-first.
Would I be required to be here?
Not necessarily. We can communicate with you if this.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Josh Lane has a way to, to contact you?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, she's not.
Okay, okay, instead of, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other public comment this evening? None? Okay. Moving on, do we have any comment from the clerk's office?
I know, other than what I stated at the top, that the year is rolled over and the annual report is in effect.
Thank you. Any council comments this evening?
Uh, one, one comment. Marshall, you know, I'm right down on Greenwood from the intersection there at Johnson Road, and man, people are just blasting through that stop sign constantly. I mean, you know, I'm not talking like a slight pause stop, they're just thirty, forty mile an hour going right through it. Is there any way that we could utilize that, um, the white speed limit sign there? Maybe to down from that or return?
The problem isn't signage, the problem is people's attitudes, their attitude towards driving. You know, we're out there, if we see it, we address it. I was on the phone with Jenny today, and I saw a car going at that excessive sixty-five, seventy miles an hour on Johnson Road. You have to be there to catch them, it's, it's that simple. And the, the Trail Creek is small, but as individuals, we're much smaller, we can only be in that one spot at one time. We'll keep an eye on it, but it's, it's not just that intersection.
Yeah.
And it's not just Trail Creek.
No, you guys are doing, yeah, a phenomenal job.
The sign's not continuing, there's already a stop sign and they're not reading that. And it's not that they don't see it, they just, people choose not to, you know, to stop today. Yeah, I, I was speeding, how fast do people go? Oh, you're a lot faster than that. She knew what the sign was, but it didn't matter. She had to get the workout time, that is the important thing. And that's, that's an everyday occurrence with us. Well, we'll keep an eye on it and make sure that, uh, you know, it's addressed. We've, we actually set up, uh, goals, or actually daily goals for the officers to follow, and that's part of it.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can Mr. Owens, can I go follow up on that?
No, sir.
Yes, you may, Mr. Owens, yes, you may.
Mentioned at the, the stoplight where you're heading north on Johnson to turn on the Michigan Boulevard, the sign that says no turn on red, I think people could not, we're.
You think that's an indot sign, though?
I think if all are completely stopped, so the turn's green, I can.
I don't think that's our sign, is it?
That's not our sign, that's not our intersection, that's Michigan City's. And Michigan City was told that that sign is not favorable to drivers. It's not fair as a driver to pull up, because you're sitting here and that sign is right here. That sign needs to be more visible. And Michigan City chose not to do anything about it, so.
So can I give some hearing protection?
I got some here, please. Yeah, we, we tried, Michigan City completely ignored our request to do anything on Michigan City.
Steve, I got a question, just, just throwing it out there. Can they, can we, uh, on South Street, Johnson Road, if you have a, uh, this, this area is enforced by a photo picture, somehow there's a camera that takes a picture of it. Somehow it identifies the car's speed and it identifies the car, takes a picture of the license plate. Does that make sense?
One, I'm not sure that a video allows that.
It doesn't.
I don't have to research.
I know, I know, it does, because it's a big thing for with, uh, there was something going on with the, the license plates, taking pictures of license plates, going in and out of Port County, the Port City was.
That doesn't do speed.
Right, right, and that was the, the big thing that they were concerned about is that they didn't want it, there, there are no red light cameras in Indiana at all, that's, yeah, it's a, right.
Is it, is it legal or not?
Right.
That's, that's the whole question. The license plate readers are not only in the county, I know Michigan City's probably got about ten or twelve of them now. Uh, the Port City is getting quite a few, so, I mean, those things are popping up everywhere, but they do absolutely nothing for speed, not what they're designed for. What you're asking for is, you know, is, A, it's, I'm pretty sure it's pretty expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, and B, I think it has to be allowed by state law, we have to find out if it's allowed.
Sure. So one thing I have seen that does work are the, the actual speed limit signs that actually show your speed and, and they have the, uh, no, no, actually like a permanent sign.
Yeah, it's just like the, it's just like the traffic signs.
Correct.
It's a permanent.
It's run by solar power, and I have actually seen those actually work.
We talked about that, um, Jenny and I talked about that late last year when, when Lit was coming around, and that's, that's, that's how, but again, they're not free, they're a hundred bucks a month.
Right, and, and right, obviously it would be cost prohibitive this time, because our budget just doesn't account for that, so.
But it is a good idea, I think it's something we can look at.
Right.
And mosters agree?
It's just scary, you know, with, with the school bus stops on Johnson and, uh.
But you, seriously, that's everywhere.
No, I.
I watch it, I watch it continuously, I mean, we watch it continuously in our jobs, and I mean, it's, it's everywhere.
Right, I.
They don't care what a sign says, they don't care that it's a stop light. Guess what, the phone they're getting is more important than what they're doing driving.
No, we had a motorcycle yesterday, uh, run from a Michigan City officer. I got the risky just to see who's coming up. I had the green light, and there was a semi across from me, the semi made the turn, and the only place this motorcycle could go was up on the median. He literally ramped onto the median and took off and continued on. And look, I kid you not, when I say he could not have been going less than a hundred fifty miles an hour into here. They don't care, they just don't care. You know, and again, yes, that's a motorcycle, and no, we can't catch them. But that's very typical of the mentality of a lot of this younger generation and hard drivers.
Well, I would, I would hesitate to say that I, you know, if you have other ideas on ways that we can address this, if you'll talk to Steve directly, and just address those to him. Any other council comments this evening?
I was, so I asked Josh Lane if he had any kind of correspondence from the architect, because I know we had asked that he have something so we could have approved it tonight, but have you heard anything from him?
He actually indicated to us at our quick meeting that it was not going to be ready this evening.
Okay.
However, he was in this morning with his guy going over some of the, just I, I was in a meeting with the insurance reps, but he, they were looking at the back and they were looking in here.
Okay.
I know that he is making some progress on it.
All right, that, that's, that's one question I had.
Right, so my other, my only comment is that we need to schedule a meeting for the employee handbook, because we've been working on this for quite some time, and it's time to get that kind of laid to rest and get moving forward on that. So if everyone can check their calendars, let me know, um, when we can meet. I would like to get this done before our next meeting, so if we could go maybe the second week of March, which would be the week of the sixth through the tenth. I know Wednesdays are not good, do you have any days that are not good during that week?
Tuesday and Friday will not be available.
Okay.
I'm good in either, but Monday.
Okay. Kind of, not Wednesdays.
Any day except Wednesday.
This would be an evening, right?
Right. Maybe it would be Thursday probably.
Could we do six fifteen?
Tuesday or Thursday?
Well, I would say Thursday, the ninth, potentially, right now.
Could we do six fifteen?
Six fifteen, March ninth.
March ninth, six fifteen.
Now, this meeting is going to be, uh, Ms. Krieger, is that how you say her last name?
Yes.
She wants to come and show you what changes she has made and then go over some things that are part of the state statutes on employee policies.
Okay.
Um, that she'll need your approval on and or a discussion on.
Okay.
So March ninth.
Six fifteen.
So three, nine, six fifteen PM.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Any other council comments before we move on?
Another question on roads, the Mankin Road, is the, uh, is the curb, I know I've worked there for fifteen years, so I know that road pretty well. Uh, that, probably collapsing, right, on the curb. Is there, so we're trying to decide, that's our responsibility? Is there, so we're trying to decide, that's our responsibility, or city responsibility, or?
Discussion and whether it's theirs, and then in the meantime, as this other property, this project takes off, Mr. Woodruff, in the, in the previous meetings, I think they're willing to look, look at it and see if there's some barrier or something they could put up to help offset that.
Do, do they repair that needs to be done right now?
No, what, what actually happened there was we had flooding across the way from it. And there's actually a pipe that goes under the road to alleviate that. Well, stuff's been dumped there and filled in. So we dug it out, and I brought to the council that we need to figure something out just to get, the road is not crumbling, it's not falling in from it, but I'm sure erosion will start soon. So, and they brought up to speak with, uh, Mr. Woodruff and see if maybe we can figure something out together, you know, because that's where a runway is supposed to go for this project supposedly.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Sure. The only other thing I have is that our next council meeting will be on, uh, Tuesday, March twenty-first, at seven P.M. here at the town hall. Hope to see you there. With that, we have a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.